President of the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce. And we do this event with the League of Women Voters. We're very proud to get together and do that. We were talking before, taking nothing away from any other elected offices on the state or national level, but this is very important. Most of us have children in the school system. And school board can be a thankless opportunity. So we really admire and are grateful for folks willing to serve and to put their names on the ballot. So we're at the School District's Instructional Planning Center. And we're very grateful for them to donate the space for us to use tonight. The event's being broadcast live on Midco Cable Channel 20 and 595. Also being livestreamed and recorded on the School District's YouTube channel. So please silence your cell phones, devices. And if you need to have conversations, take those outside. As a reminder, if you haven't already voted, early voting's open, but election day is Tuesday, May 16th. For more information on how to vote, please visit the Sioux Falls School District's website Our municipalities and school districts are always good for long websites, but you can find that. Or you can go vote early. So this year's ballot will have three names on it. However, only two candidates are actively seeking the position. Both are with us tonight. Dawn Marie Johnson and Brian Mattson. Thank you, as I said before, to the candidates for participating in the forum and for your willingness to serve our community and our children. It's now my honor to introduce our moderator for this evening, representing the League of Women Voters, is Melanie Bliss. And Melanie served multiple terms on the Sioux Falls School Board and a couple in Wisconsin I just learned about. So she's well schooled on what we're doing here tonight. So Melanie, it's all yours.
This is a surprise for Jeff. In our mail yesterday, we get the Huron Daily Plainsman. On the day, it comes in the mail on the day that it's published, because it comes overnight. And there is the front page of the Huron News with Jeff Griffin on it. So this is a surprise. You've never got it on the front. What am I doing? And Jeff mentioned about voting early. You vote early here until March, May 15th, in this building. And they have it all set up for you. So that's early voting for 15 days before the election. So we're going to begin about explaining the format for tonight. Questions from the audience are welcome, and they're encouraged, but they're on cards. And we're not having anybody in the audience stand up and say anything. We have no signs. If you have a sign, put it under your chair. There's no clapping and no outbursts of any kind, negative, positive, or anything. The League of Women Voters have very strict rules on this. And it would be helpful if you have a question and you have a card to fill out, hold it up, and they'll come pick it up. And then we're gathering them into categories. And we'll ask and answer the questions and try to get as many topics as possible in tonight. Each candidate will have two minutes for a self-introduction. After that, we will transition to the questions and answers portion of the event. And both candidates will have the opportunity to respond to each question. And we'll have 90 seconds for their response. There will be no rebuttal time. And at the end of the forum, there'll be two minutes for closing comments. Our timer tonight, you'd show the different signs. Okay, Norm's shown the signs. We are strict on the two minutes. We're going to start tonight alphabetically by last name. Therefore, we will begin with Dawn Marie Johnson and will be followed by Brian Mattson. Dawn Marie, you have two minutes.
Well, thank you, Melanie, and thank you, Brian, for running. It's just no easy task, and I commend you for doing that. And thank you for everybody for coming. I've built my personal and professional career on two pillars, which is collaboration and future generations. Guided by that and these two pillars, I've recently worked at Joe Foss, the Axtel Park Building. My work at Joe Foss has provided me with a unique insight into the needs of our students, completed with my rich background in working in after-school care, running a program, and now supporting programs across the state. With the After-School Network, I have a unique lens on which education and youth support as a collaborative effort extends into a traditional classroom. As a mother of Rain Marie here tonight, I have a personal interest in making sure our public school systems are fully equipped to create a healthy, respectful, and caring students. Thank you for having me here tonight, and thank you for all of you that go out and vote early.
Brian?
Well, as you know, I'm new to these things. But I, well, one thing, I'm not a good public speaker. I'll just let you know that right away here. I do have background in the United States Marine Corps, leadership capabilities there. And I do have a heart for the children in the city. I want to make sure that they are educated properly and that we can raise them in the way that the parents would like them to be raised. I appreciate you coming, and you running also, and your daughter. Thank you for coming. We'll call it there.
Ladies, I have no questions.
Oh.
And we're done?
Are we done?
We're done. That's all you need to know. I've got some extra questions.
All right.
And we're going to have... No, I haven't. Okay, sorry. Okay, thank you. They're crisscrossed so that we can know. Here's the first one. Board responsibilities. As a potential school board member, what role do criteria of age and educational appropriateness play in the selection of materials for Sioux Falls District libraries? Who wants to go first?
When do you like to?
You can go ahead.
Okay. Well, the role of age and appropriate materials for the age is a very strong desire of mine. A lot of things that are taught too early in life may not need to be. And it could take a little bit of burden off the teachers in order to teach them the more basic things earlier. And as you get older, some more complicated issues.
Well, I've worked in school systems for the last 10 years. This is actually my first year not being inside a school setting. I have a lot of trust and faith in our educators and our librarians to make right choices as to what they put out. And I love that there is a policy in place for things that are questionable and that parents and guardians have access to those things when they do have concerns.
Next one is, in addition to salaries, how can the school board support teachers and other staff?
In regards to salary?
In addition to salaries.
Okay.
Okay. Now, how can the school board support teachers and other staff?
I'll go first. So I've prided myself in being an active listener. I have a master's in social work, so it's in my innate nature to be a listener. I've spent a lot of time since living in Sioux Falls with all walks of life, all educators, various groups within the city to listen and hear what their strengths are, but also the areas that we can grow in. As a city that's growing and evolving and increased world majority numbers are evolving, we need to make sure that we're coming together in a collaborative way. And we need to make sure that we're coming together to put our best foot forward for our children. And I have proof and concept in that, being a part of a human relations commissioner, being on the Bridging the Gap Community Foundation, and being in the Indian Ed Parent Committee. So getting involved has been very important to me, and listening is very important.
We'll start with Dawn Marie on this one. How do you see the demographic?
Does he get her answer?
I'm sorry, Brian. I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's all right. So in addition to the salaries, teachers do need to hear from the school board, for sure, and get a good view of what the school board is thinking. And hopefully, we can work together with the teachers to get them all the materials that they need to fully educate our kids.
Okay.
I'm a short-answer person.
This one is, how do you see the demographics of the community affecting the decisions of the school board? Want to go first?
Sure. So demographics in the community affecting the school board? I don't know that that is any issue. You know, all people are humans, and should all be treated as humans.
Yeah, we definitely agree on that. I think there's a few barriers, just looking at the number of languages that we have, even within our school system, talking to various groups. I went to a kunama group at Washington, a parent committee group. And there was a clear need for translations. And I think out of the 210,000 kunama people in the world, Sioux Falls houses about 6,000. That's incredible. So as far as like an issue, I think there's a lot of area of growth, for sure. And language would be one of them, making sure our school system is prepared and set up to support various languages in the growing populations.
Okay. The social studies standards have been adopted. Do you support, and what would your role be in ensuring they were implemented by law? This is the state standards.
So I openly testified against them at the hearing here in Sioux Falls. I actually have a physical copy of the standards, and it's large. Understanding what a school teacher has to go through the day and implementing such a large takeover of studies for a regular day is very daunting. And I can recognize that this is going to be a challenge for teachers. Getting out and supporting them and having listening sessions with them and how to best support them and not assuming it is going to be incredibly vital in getting through the social studies standards as we start to implement it. I look forward to collaborating with educators. I just met with the Sioux Falls Education Association, and this is top of mind for them. They have a vested interest into learning how we're going to go about doing this. And I need folks like them to walk alongside us and support us in that way.
I agree completely with that. I do agree with the social studies standards. So after reading through the first few grades, I really was impressed with the type of education that it is providing for the kids. And I don't think that it's going to be too much of a problem with the teachers to implement that into their daily classes. So I am definitely willing to walk alongside them, like you said, and see what we can do to help them out in order that our kids can learn what our country was founded on.
She just said that she openly opposed those standards.
I opposed, yeah.
Yeah, you opposed them, but I...
You agree.
I agree with what you said as far as the implementation and everything.
The implementation?
Correct.
Is that clear? Another one. How should the school board go about planning for new schools? We'll start with Brian.
Well, for new schools, of course, Sioux Falls, the boundaries of Sioux Falls is growing, getting down into Harrisburg, into T, up into Baltic, over into Brandon, and over into the West Central. So how much more are we going to be growing? And I know there's a lot of farmland between these cities, but I think that we can, you know, with the population growth areas, get some schools in there.
Dawn Marie?
There is such an incredible need. We have grown so fast. And this is an area that I'm not confident in speaking on, but I have taken the time to meet with city council members to learn more about it, because it is impacting all the same people that we serve. So as a school board member, I will need to tap into those experts who are knowledgeable in the expansion of Sioux Falls, because I did not go to school for those things, but I'm willing to learn about them.
Okay. Any other here? Yep. This is Sam bringing. I've never had a question like this before.
Oh, my.
This is titled Lunch. The school lunch program has been criticized for too much added sugar and processed food. Do you agree? What would you do to fix it? We'll start with you.
Okay. Well, like I mentioned, I have worked inside school settings. I have been a cook, and I've been a part of that process. And there are very strict guidelines to following national standards that have been proven to be best and nutritious for our kids. So as far as challenging that or looking into it, that's probably more of a national space. But if there's a way to improve and give our kids some more vibrant options, I think my daughter Rain would agree that she would love to have more colorful foods in her school lunch.
Brian?
Yeah. The school lunch program and the breakfast program, there is a lot of sugars that go into that. And as a person with type 2 diabetes, I know a bit about sugar and how it affects the body. I would like to see the school lunch program and breakfast program be revamped a little bit, at least to reduce some of the carbs that are going into that. One thing is carbs, you know, give kids energy. And I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but they need to be able to work it out with physical education. And that's another aspect of things. You know, the more... Sorry, the more... I'm sorry, I'm missing a word here. The more physical education, physical activity that the children have, the better they are able to process those sugars, and the better they'll perform in school.
Next one is issue of behavior in classrooms. The local school superintendents recently spoke to the Chamber of Commerce about the mental health crises in our children and the serious impact on behavior in the classroom. As a school board member, what policies would you support to address this? Brian?
On the physical education side of things, more exercise, I think, would help with the children in class, as they would burn off some of that excess energy, gives you more oxygen into your brain, so that they can focus better on the academics and not act up so much in class.
Dawn Marie?
Currently, our school system has four different behavioral programs, so coordinated early intervening services, positive behavior intervention and support, and C-STAG, and multi-tiered system of support. Working in the Joe Foss program, and Rain's father being a behavioral specialist previously, I have a very solid understanding of the implementation of each of those, what they look like. I've seen it firsthand. Is there always a growing and evolving student? Yes. So how are we looking at each school, their culture and their school setting, and what works for teachers, to ensure that each of these systems are following through for them? That sort of support, I would feel strongly about being a part of. I would feel strongly that my area of expertise as a social worker would play a very valuable asset to exploring and meeting the needs of our students in the behavior programs, but also ensuring and looking more into mental health, which hopefully is another question. I just know I can provide a very solid expertise area in that.
There isn't another one yet. Go ahead.
I started with that one.
Okay. Much is said of teacher pay in South Dakota, but nobody focuses on administrative pay. When comparing the two, do you believe it is equitable? Brian?
There is definitely an administration pay gap between like teachers and administration. I do believe in fiscal responsibility, and I would work towards making that gap a little bit smaller, not necessarily taking away any pay from the administration, but making sure that everybody is equal as far as, you know, what they put into things and making sure that we are fiscally responsible as a school board.
I think it goes without being said that teachers are vastly underpaid, and they don't go into it knowing they're going to make millions. However, walking alongside the educators during the pandemic, I can definitely recognize and appreciate that they deserve more. I know that we do have our 7% increase. So starting pay for Sioux Falls School District went from $38,000 to $51,000, which is a great leap. As far as the administrative piece goes, there is a difference in months that administrators work. So whereas teachers do their nine months, administrators work 12 months. So there is a financial difference based off of that. But for teachers, absolutely, they will always deserve more. And looking into the budgetary needs and talking, again, collaborating with the Sioux Falls Education Association, and just working through the realistic budget is going to be incredibly important.
This is about bullying. We used to say, "Sticks and stones will break my bones, but words will never hurt me." Now words are called violence. Do you think we are, I'll add the word "are," on the right track? Unusual question about bullying.
Yes, that is an unusual question. So is the school district on the right track to combating bullying? Do you think that's what it means?
I think that's what it means.
Okay.
I don't know for sure.
Okay. Well, I can confidently say that no educator, cook, janitor, if they're observing a moment of a student getting harassed in a type of way, none of them would just pass by. They're all there for the kids for a reason. Every single position is. So on the right track? I guess I'm unclear of what that means, but we are uplifting our educators to care. And I've seen firsthand that they do care.
Brian?
Well, I do know that there has been bullying going on since the dawn of schooling. I was a victim of bullying when I was a kid. And unfortunately, I still hear that it keeps going on. I think the most important thing that we can do is to instill self-confidence in the children that are being bullied, and for them to stand up for themselves also, to say, "Hey, please don't bully me." The bullies will eventually back down, I think. I know what I had to do to take care of my bullying problem. Unfortunately, I didn't have any administrators or teachers that were on my side. And I would like to see that happen. I, you know, I appreciate you talking about how the, you know, all the people that are in the school system, working for the school system, if they do see that, I would hope that they don't let it slide. However, I have seen it much in the past. But that was many years ago.
This is, as a school board member, would you support a teacher's decision to hang flags, other than the United States or South Dakota flag, in their classroom?
I've been incredibly excited to walk into Rosa Parks, where my daughter goes, to see our tribal flags represented. As you walk into Rosa Parks, there's multiple nationalities up on the wall in the lunchroom. And that's really beautiful, and I appreciate that so much. She's Mexican, Native, and German, and she can see her representation as soon as she walks into the school. And I thoroughly appreciate that. That makes her feel good, and that makes her feel seen and loved. And I absolutely support having that available to the schools.
Brian?
In my experience, being in the Marine Corps, the flag is, the United States flag is the ultimate. And if that is displayed in the classroom, I'm fine with other flags being displayed in the classroom also, as long as the flag etiquette of the United States is adhered to.
This one is, as a board member, what strategies will you use to engage with parents and community members? Brian?
I would hope that we could have some community events that we could get together with parents that are interested in their children's education, that we could get together and talk to one another and find out what the issues are that they're having, what they would like to see happen in the school system. And just collaborate with them, make sure that everyone is being heard.
Dawn Marie?
As I mentioned earlier, I've worked incredibly hard to get into and be welcomed by different entities, communities. Just recently, I broke fast with the Muslim community, which was an incredible experience. I watched the rebirth of the NAACP, which was an amazing thing to see. I've been a part of different tribal experiences with my people, again, attending the Ethiopian group Sudan. I've been to their churches. So taking the time to get out to the various communities as we grow and evolve, and making sure that the Sioux Falls School District has a presence in those communities is going to be incredibly important for me, and it's something that I'm very passionate about. I want to be able to have the various communities that are moving here to feel welcomed. I want them to be able to come to me with their needs. And I want to have those open listening sessions, those community events, continue with Dr. Stavum's community things. I think there's one tonight. Continue to have those open forums for folks to come in. But also, I just want people to have trust in us and be able to look at their school board and see representation upon their school board. And for me, that's huge, to know that I can represent my people. That's a big deal for me, and I'm very proud of that.
The workforce development continues to be an issue our business community faces. With the needs of employers continually changing, how will you work to ensure that our students are given the tools to succeed in the modern workplace? What kind of community partnerships or activities could support student achievement during or outside of school? Dawn Marie?
So working at Joe Foss, I had the privilege of helping youth, who I have quite a few of them here tonight, help them bridge into society by way of internships, jobs, job shadows, opportunities that give them real-life experience. In front of me right here, I'm looking at students that took on internships and are still working at those internship spaces two years later, and being very successful here in our community, and I'm very proud of them. Those sort of opportunities are so valuable. And I know we have the CTE Academy that I was able to experience firsthand and have an opportunity to send students out to. I know we work closely with the city in getting career connections. We also have a new position here in the Sioux Falls School District that solely focuses on K through 12 career opportunities. And I know it's in its first year, and that is incredible. But getting the partnerships brought into the schools, I've done that, and it's been successful. I have several stories of success stories, just like these ladies up front, where they see the value in doing internships and they see the value in job shadows. where they see the value in doing internships and they see the value in job shadows. And on the flip side, businesses are starting to understand this next generation and taking the time to ask the educators what they can do in bettering their business to ensure that they're creating a healthy culture for our next generation.
Brian?
I see a need for more entrepreneurial mentorship also because we have a lot of growth here in this city. We've got a lot of businesses that move in and they're looking for good managers, good children, or, you know, good workers with skills that would help grow the business. And entrepreneurial skills are, are a great tool for that. I know there's a few programs around that do work with the schools and I would like to see more interaction with them.
If elected, what are some specific actions you plan to recommend that in your mind would improve our public schools? How would you go about achieving them? Brian?
If I do get elected, I'm going to have to look more into these, into what all is going on and, in order to make a good informed decision on what areas I'd like to see improved. I do wouldn't, you know, I do want to bring back the gymnastics. There's so many, so many kids that, that enjoy that program and it's so great to see them get together as a team. And I would encourage, you know, some way that we can get that back in here.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, we are candidates, so there's a lot to learn and getting into the actual position is going to be a whole different ballgame. I'm excited for the community learning centers. As an after-school professional and understanding the after-school world, I see a real opportunity for us to collaborate and bridge the gap between parents, guardians, families, communities, into these community centers and having more open community involvement with those centers and being able to bridge that gap between the daytime and the afternoon time. Another area that I was able to grow was a program called Leaders of Tomorrow and building onto those workforce skills was, was one of the big pieces to that program. And enhancing a program like that throughout our school district, because I have proof and concept right here, the success of students going through a leadership program that not just focuses on academics, but focuses on them as a leader, focuses on their confidence and helps them grow in the community and gets them access to different resources. It's just, it's a new way of thinking and it's just, it's incredible to see, again, the proof and concept of the amazing students that I have here tonight and knowing that those things matter and they work and the school can be a part of that.
As a school board member, would you support the use of the award-winning New York Times 1619 Project in the Sioux Falls School District?
I would have to go through it thoroughly before I answer that.
Brian?
Same with me.
School safety is always front of mind for many parents. What would you do to improve school safety and prevent a school shooting in South Dakota? Brian?
Well, I know there's the Sentinel Program that the Sioux Falls District has not adopted. There are other schools across South Dakota that have adopted it. And I would like to revisit that and see what we can do about getting good volunteers that are trained in police tactics that they can actually protect our students from any type of situation like that.
As an after-school director in a couple of different programs, I built our safety policies. So I have a pretty broad and a little more intense understanding of what those look like for different buildings. However, I am not an expert and I am not a police officer and tapping into those resources and leveraging the people, the folks who do deal with those things will be important to me. I've sat down with Police Task Force folks, Chief Tomb, and asked him questions on how he, how we think we can better improve our relationship with the school district. But I also value the teachers' input and how they feel their safety measures land for them and their students. I've been a part of safety drills that are incredibly traumatizing for kids. I've been an educator who has, has been through real-life active shooter drills where we had pellets hitting us and I can tell you, I don't feel like that's the way. So I know there's a lot to look into and I know that we need to collaborate more to look at our safety and policy procedures, but I know it's top of mind for everybody. Safety is a huge concern and it's number one for parents. So, taking this seriously and sitting down with a group of people, getting the experts and having my lived experiences is going to be where we start.
Additional questions? Thank you. This one comes under diversity. What ideas do you have to diversify the teaching staff and better mirror our student body? Brian?
I think that as far as diversity goes, we should hire on, you know, based on merit. If, it, it doesn't matter to me what blood we have, what nationality we have. If there's qualifications that are met and even exceeded, it doesn't matter who it is. They should be hired.
This is definitely beyond the school district. As a community that's growing, we all need to have a role in this space and we all need to take it upon ourselves to learn about each other in each new pocket of ethnic groups that are moving here. Again, it, it's, this process has been quite stressful, but the beautiful thing that has come out of this is getting invited to, to areas and different communities and learning about them. And having more of that, having more commonality, we have more in common than we don't. And showing up, that's a thing that I'm very stern on is if I'm going to show up and commit to something, I'm going to show up and commit to something and that means a lot to various communities. And more, more, the more we can get together, the more we can come as a community, the more we can have the understanding that we are more similar than we know. That's going to grow the, the interest even into bringing different communities in and showcasing what they have. And then students will be more interested in being educators. Students will be more interested in being bus drivers. Like, once they see somebody that looks like them by close proximity, they're more likely to do it. And going out to the reservations and doing STEM initiatives with kids that I have this last summer, I know for facts, there was a young Native girl inspired to do STEM work after doing that.
This one, this is an old topic. This goes back to 1990. What do you think about moving toward a year-round school calendar and having more frequent breaks? And what this means is you would have a term, a longer time off, another term, a longer time off, and there would not be this traditional year off on the summer. Brian?
That's something I haven't given too much thought to. We grew up that way, everyone in this, in this country is pretty much that way. I don't know of any state or, or district that is doing a, a system like that. To me, I think kids look forward to that summer break and are excited to be able to spend some time away from the learning experience. And then when they come back, they're refreshed, ready to go for the next, uh, next grade in their season.
Dawn Rain?
Okay, well, I'm going to call it for what it is, that I was born that year. So I don't have any knowledge of. Uh, I don't have lived experiences of that, so I can't really speak to it. But it would be interesting to see who has and hear and learn more about it.
I know there are many people that could.
Phone a friend.
This is one going back to the social studies mandate that's new, coming, coming in. How do you plan on getting the money to pay for the newly adopted social studies mandate? And this is under the category of finances. Brian?
Again, examining the, the budget system that we have right now, seeing where we can, you know, what, what programs are essential? What programs could be cut back a little bit? Are there any programs that could be eliminated? There are many ways that we could, you know, increase our funding, funding for the social studies curriculum. And I would definitely look forward to looking into the finances on that.
Yeah, this is a, this is a huge area and inevitably going to be a part of whoever wins this term because it's going to cost $3 million to revamp the curriculum. The standards don't align well with Spanish immersion, which we know Sioux Falls has a very, a lot of growth with that. And then it also doesn't fit into our kids' Chromebooks. So there is more to this than just the budget, logistically. And it is going to be, it's going to be top of mind for all of us to look into and I look forward to learning more about that as well.
I didn't hear, it won't fit in.
Chromebooks.
Chromebooks.
And it doesn't align with Spanish immersion curriculum.
There's, this is a hard one probably. As a school board member, will you be accessible to the public and public input on the board's decisions? Dawn Rain?
I guess it would be worth knowing the policies in place currently on how accessible we can be. I know when I email our school board folks, they do have a kickback email that'll give like a proper time of response. So there is some space in between that allows them to exist as a human and also take care of businesses they need to. Again, I'm very passionate about being community and partner focused. So I will be personally doing my due diligence to attend and be a part of different community entities as often as humanly possible with, with a firm balance in understanding that I have a nine-year-old daughter who needs to go to school. And so it's, again, understanding that policy of, you know, recognizing that there are only two school board members can be at certain things at a time and knowing those ins and outs. But I do intend on being a very active school board member.
Brian?
I hope to be as excessive, or as, as accepted.
Assessing.
Words. Accessible. I hope to be as accessible as possible. I would, you know, value anybody's input into what's going on in the school district. And, you know, as Dawn said, if the policies allow, I will be as accessible as possible.
This one, I guess several topics in one. Should parents have parental permission to choose what books their children have access to, both in school and Chromebooks?
In a short answer, yes. I believe that parents should be allowed to choose what books that their children are, have available to them. There are some books in the library system that don't align with, I would say, most of the parents' beliefs. And if they don't want their children to read those books, I would say, yes. They should have that ability to say, "No, they cannot, their children are not allowed to read those books."
Okay, Dawn Rain?
I monitor what Rain brings home and I haven't had any complaints. And if I did have a complaint, I know there is a process in place for me to file and send into the school board. But ultimately, I do trust our librarians.
Okay. Where would you like to see the Sioux Falls schools be in five years? What is your vision for the near future? Brian?
A five-year plan? Well, I hope that we have better academics, better, as far as better grades coming out of the high schoolers. You know, as far as their career path goes, just encourage them in their, in their careers. As far as a five-year plan goes, I'd increase in educational output.
Yeah, that's a huge question to ask. I mean, just looking at the district priorities for this year, academic success while being, community engagement, staff excellence, and effective use of resources, that's right on target to what I feel we all want for our school district. And I, I feel strongly that I could grow and enhance some areas, especially with our community learning centers. And knowing that the teachers, top of mind thing for them is working through behavior supports, I know I would be a huge asset to that. And growing and enhancing what we have existing, such as those programs and programs like Joe Foss, Axtel Park, will be important for me. But also, looking at how we can make the community learning centers work for us and be successful will be a huge undertaking, but it, it will, it'll help.
What experience do you have helping children? Dawn Rain?
Well, they're sitting right in front of me and Rain included. They're sitting right in front of me. I love my kids. I have worked really hard to build relationships and ensure that they are well taken care of in and out of school and ensure that Rain has the best education. I'm very involved and the proof is in this room.
Brian?
I've got two grown children and one of them is living out in Sacramento right now, following his desires. He's a ballet dancer with the Sacramento Second Ballet Company. And he's very, he never ceases to amaze me. We were, we just went to Sacramento this weekend, this past weekend, here to watch him in a choreograph that he did with the rest of his company. And it's just amazing to see how much of a man he has become. He's only 20 years old right now and I'm just amazed at how well he's done. My daughter lives on the east side of town here. She's been married for over three years now and has just had a grandson, or just given me a grandson. So, I am looking forward to, to helping with his education also.
Here's a real general personal viewpoint one. Do you believe fundamentally in the separation of church and state?
Yes, as set forth by the Constitution, yes.
I don't know how to answer that right now.
Okay. Do you believe all students have a right to food? If so, how will you work to make all school lunches free? If not, why not?
Yeah, I benefited directly from the school lunches being free during the, the year that it was. It was a huge financial lift for our family to have that available. to, I guess, I don't know what that would look like as far as a local level to ensure that there's free food right now. I know at a state level, there was a bill that almost passed that would have allowed for that. So I'm very curious to see next year what would come of a bill like that at a state level.
I agree. As far as the, you know, that bill goes, if children are, you know, they come from a financially hardship background, I agree that they should have some, you know, have food by the school provided. I would prefer it's more nutritional than what we have right now. But yeah, I don't have any problems with that.
Okay. Well, our time is done for questions and answers. I'm going to have a quiz at the end, asking, asking a very good question.
Pop quiz?
It's a pop quiz. And the, the closing comments will follow, and they are two minutes for your closing comments, and we'll reverse. We will begin with Brian and end with Don Marie. So beginning and the ending change. Now, does anyone know the national award that has just been received by the school district of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, National Recognition? I have prizes if you do.
Oh, my God.
First, we ask for Don Marie and Brian, if you know.
Was it music-related?
Yes. Here is your prize.
Oh, okay.
2020 through three, Best Communities for Music Education.
Yeah.
We are a certified best in the country. And I learned that at the symphony. We didn't have a ballet, but we had Beethoven. And I'm just really pleased about that. And we need to lift up the fine arts, and we need to lift up the academics, all these different things. I have one more bag. I'm giving it to you. To be equal, so.
I'm diabetic. Would anybody? No, don't worry about it. It's just a joke about my
I really, I really miss that. I'm sorry. So I am sure that the candidates will stay around if you're, if you are able to stay to talk to. We've had a lot of duplication tonight, and a lot of things that did not pertain to South Dakota that we didn't, I didn't give out. Several were very political, and there were a whole bunch in an area that we did not go into of LGBTQ. And we can discuss all of that. They were quite specific. So for tonight, we'll be, we'll do our closing comments, and then we'll have a wish for you all. Thank you. So, Brian?
Well, being in the Marines, again, I reiterate the leadership that I have gained from that. And I am really excited to get to know the rest of the board and work together with them to uphold the laws of our nation and of our state, of our county, and our city, and get our children the best education possible. Maybe we can get a national award for that.
Okay, Don Marie?
So I do firmly believe that the best investment we can make is in our children and families. Having the lived experiences that I have, having worked in the Sioux Falls School District, having worked inside a school setting where I was the cook, the bus driver, the janitor, I see firsthand what our teachers, educators, everybody has gone through, especially after the pandemic. I do want to be a person that is trusted in the community by all communities. I do want all children to succeed and grow and have the opportunities that they deserve. I do want to be a safe space for the children in our school district and educators. I want them to feel confident in their board. I want the community to feel confident. But I also know that I can't do this alone. I know that I'm going to need support, community support. We're serving the same set of people, rallying together and coming together, having the conversations, even if they're incredibly tough. We have to start doing that. We have to come together. The growing, the evolving that we're seeing in our city, it's going to be so vital for us to not just look and say, this is your responsibility, this is your responsibility. Coming together, being that person that will bring us together, I feel confident that I can do that. I feel confident that I can lead the best way that I know how. And I know that, at the end of the day, I'm going to do what's right for my daughter Rain.
Thank you. Thank you both. It gives me great pleasure to acknowledge a current legislator, Liz Larson, in the room, two former legislators, Linda Stensland and Pam Nelson, in the room, and also that Pam Nelson is a twofer, because she went from school board to the legislature. So know that that can happen. And know that everyone in this room has the right to vote in a free democracy on May 16. It horrifies me when we get 3% to 5% of the voters who are registered voting. Please take 11 people with you.
Yes, yes.
And when you don't get 11, then you got to do this again and again and again. My husband just said, time is up.
My gosh.
Have a good night, have a good, have a good supper, a good dessert. Be sure to get people out to vote.
Yeah.
Yes.
My plea. Thank you very much. Listen. And we're clapping for two candidates for school board. And here comes the greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce guy. Are you coming to say anything? We're finished.